I'll call the session to order, this meeting to order. And will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, are there any changes to the agenda? And I'm going to ask that people say their name or something so because I you're so tiny, I can't see. All right, no changes. Then we're going to have public comments and we ask for some specific feedback if possible. Oh, also Nick, are you going to remind people of the policy?
Yes, I can do that.
Thanks.
So the policy is up on the screen right now. So we do have people attending digitally and in person. So everybody should be able to see that at this point in order to read that over. So I guess what's a little different about this public session compared to the the last one or the typical is that we will be also taking public comments specific to the 2021 22 reopening framework, just in a kind of conceptual way. If you'd like to provide any sort of feedback. So again, I'll put this back up so that everybody can give it a read as we're pulling in. So for the people in person, if you'd like to make a public comment, we do have a microphone setup right at the front of the room, free to go up to that, make your comment. People who are attending digitally, if you would just use the band at the bottom of the screen, it should say raise hand, you press that button. And what that'll allow you to do is to be seen, we can add your audio and then first, everybody, first name, last name, town of residence. So I will give a little bit of an opportunity for people again to read the policy also to if you would like to make a public comment remotely, just feel free to queue in line using that raise hand feature. And then obviously, if anybody in the public wants to attend, you're free to go up to the microphone. So do we have a preference as to whether we take the folks in person or remotely first? We do have one.
I guess in person first.
Okay, so yeah, you're free to move on up.
Hi, I'm Gwenna Kedala from Ringe. And this is with to go coincide with the reopening, but I've the address it would be the now the mask mandate for outside activities right now. Playground graduation with the heat. I know RMS they had some problems with kids getting overheated on the playground today. I think this, I know this is going to be addressed later on in the meeting, but I just wanted it to be to know the concerns and for all outside activity to the masks to be lifted.
Thanks, Gwenna.
All right, then we have one more in person.
Yep.
Hello, my name is Stacy Sepala from Ringe. And I'm just kind of here to second that first to hopefully get rid of the masks outside. I mean, I'd love to see them gone inside as well, but for the reopening in the fall, I am a huge advocate to, I don't even, I don't even want to say get rid of the mask. I want to say get rid of the mask, but I just want it to be the choice of the kids or the parents. Like let it be the choice. If people really want to wear a mask, let them. But please give these kids a choice. I want to say most of these kids, probably 95% of these kids are together after hours. None of them are wearing masks. The masks are gone in all the stores, the restaurants. The only place that the majority of these kids are wearing them are here in school. So at this point, I feel like it's just a moot point, you know? But I don't want to negate the kids that feel necessary to wear them, let them wear them, but please give these kids a choice.
Thanks, Stacy.
All right, so that was everybody in person. So now we're going to go to the remote audience. So we have Sarah Graham.
Hi, my name is Sarah Graham and I'm a Ringe resident. I'm a parent of a student as well as a teacher at JRMS. I'm concerned with the recent hot weather and our students' learning environment. Some classrooms have AC, some don't, some have fans, some don't. And with days reaching 90 plus, I feel like we need to provide our children and teachers with a safe learning environment. This has to include a way to adequately cool all classrooms from the elementary schools through the middle high school. It is difficult to think of how students can be expected to learn when classroom temperatures rise into the mid 80s. And I hope this is also a consideration as we look towards the reopening framework next year as well as for the remainder of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, so last call for anybody who would like to speak publicly on this public comment session number one. In addition to our normal public comments that you can make about agenda items, you're also free to make any sort of comments you'd like to make regarding the potential, you know, reopening plan for next school year. So we do have another person. Amanda Pastola.
Hi. So Amanda Pastola from Ringe, I have two children at the Ringe Memorial School, currently enrolled in the Remote Learning Program. I have a lot of concerns over our reopening framework, much of what the others have already spoke out about, the mask wearing. And I guess some of my biggest questions are for our community, in addition to the surveys we've put out. You know, what kind of science are we following? Do we have a team that actually is looking at research instead of just kind of following what government officials say? And have we looked at other schools in the area like Heritage School or Dublin Christian Academy that haven't had these restrictions and have had decent outcomes?
Okay, thank you, Amanda.
All right. Again, last call for public comments at this time. All right, I'm not seeing any more public comments either in person or remotely.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, so then now we'll move on to item number four, the superintendent's report. His mic isn't working. I hear the hitting.
What are you doing? Okay.
There we go. Yeah.
So SRR three is the newest funding source that the federal government has given to the state to give to each school district. Our funds with both the SRR three funds that we've received so far, which is about two thirds of the total funds, and then we'll have another third after we hand in our, or shortly thereafter, we hand in our reopening framework for the 2021 22 school year will be about 2.4, 2.5 million right in there. We also have approximately a million that is in SRR two funds. And we have utilized all of our SRR one funds just about as well as the fact that we pretty aggressively went after some extra money that existed. We had like a week to do everything and our team did a great job. They got another 180,000 or so that we were able to utilize, which is great. So we want to make certain that the funds that we have that we're utilizing them in the best way possible. Sarah Graham was a teacher and a Ringe resident who spoke earlier tonight about air quality and air cooling and things of that nature. So one of the uses of the SRR three funds in particular, but also the two and three is for HVAC air quality. I mean, you can use it for a variety of other things too, but it seems like that is something that one, our school district needs. It's already been an identified need in some capacity anyway for our long range planning that we've been working on. It's a great way to, you know, help our schools, our children, our employees, as well as to use the money in a really smart way. I mean, these are taxpayers. I mean, it's federal funds, but let's be honest, your tax, everyone's taxes go to this in a way that's really going to improve the school district. And we're not going to have to ask our constituents out in the community, hey, can you please fund the work for these schools that we're going to have to do anyway at some point, but probably over a very long period of time, comparatively speaking. So we have an opportunity and we're being very aggressive right now to do basically re HVAC the both elementary schools and possibly depending on costs to do some work here at the middle school as well in the area of the school that has some of those temperatures on a regular basis when it gets a little hotter of those mid 80s. We certainly in that older part of the middle school, it is tougher. The, so we're looking at that. EEI is the company that we worked with before. EEI is a company that has done our energy upgrades. They do HVAC work, a few other things. They typically also like to hire locally. So their contractors, they try to hire local contractors, put that money back into the local community. We see that as a positive. There are some difficulties with this. When the federal government allowed schools to use these funds for construction, new construction or anything like this, that really hasn't been done before. And so there are some pretty tight regulations around new construction. Now, what we're talking about is not really new construction, but it is still nonetheless in part of the language that was put out there, it ties HVAC work to new construction, which complicates the entire process for us. So I've been talking with Jean Shaheen's cohort over there and getting them to do some work for us. We've been, I've been with, talking with the commissioner, he's been great getting back and forth with me. And I believe we're at the point where we're making some movement. EEI is now charged with getting some very detailed plans like as as though it is new construction to the Department of Education. The Department of Education does not have an engineer on their books. They have had no reason for that. They are contracting with an organization to come in and those individuals will do the stamp of approval on these plans. Once that happens, there's a few other requests that we've already put into the Department of Education that they need to grant. I think that will take place. And if this all can happen within this week, then we should be well on our way to getting some really neat things done this summertime. We have a lot of work that, you know, to plan this summer, so in the lead times on purchasing some of this equipment, some of the equipment that we're talking about is not just replacing in kind, but replacing with dehumidification units. So that is not the same as straight air conditioning. It's in some ways better because it actually improves the air quality, but it also does change the air that is coming on in. So right now, like we have 100% airflow coming in from the outside, but it's at the temperature of the outside. Whereas this would go through a dehumidification process and then cool that air as it comes in. And we've requested that it happen in every area within the school, so offices as well as the classrooms. So that's the work that's being done right now. I hope that by the next time we have a board meeting, this is all finalized and we're not even having this conversation to let you know of this, you know, the work that's hopefully going to take place. We'll be saying it will be taking place and here's the scheduled work. Also, SRR three related, though, is the reopening framework. Now, we knew that we would need to have another framework for this coming year. That being said, the timeframe has been sped up a little bit due to ties with federal funds and so forth and how you know, it's being dictated, the time is being dictated to us, not to say we can't approve a plan and then do what we have done and as evidence comes in, as data comes in, as things change, we can adjust that plan as we go along. But we do need to have a base plan. And though we could utilize the one we currently have, it is unlikely that the one we currently have is going to be acceptable for the next year, given that circumstances have changed. We've talked a little bit about some of those circumstances. And so though we, you know, we're trying to get a broad sense of what people are looking for in the coming year, we need to show that, by the way. It's not just something we are doing, we would do it anyway, but we also do have to document that we have brought stakeholders into this conversation. And so you can see that there's a few graphs, both families that have responded. We've had about 350, 370 families around that area respond so for respond so far to the survey. It's open for a little while longer, about another week. And we've had about 140, 150 staff, staff includes teachers, support staff, SAU employees and so forth. And so for the most part, where things stand right now, most everyone, that number one over there says basically, let's, let's remove the restrictions. And so both the families and the staff are looking at that as being their highest choice. It differs a little bit when if if things were, if we were to have a spike in the community or the spike in the local community. It evens out a little more across the board with the staff as to precautions and and lessons a little bit with with families, but families still by and large, if we were to scroll down. Well, scroll down, I guess we scroll up at this point to that, that bottom, that second one. You can see that even if we did have some sort of a spike in the community and so forth, families are still saying for the most part we'd just, you know, the masks, the social distancing, things like that. We don't believe are necessary. So there's a little bit of difference in that. In most of the other areas, there are a lot of similarities between the groups. One of those areas was the question having to do with snow days. And you can see the green there is saying the people, which is the majority in both of the groups saying having a mix of snow days, so don't eliminate snow days. If you got some good snow, if it's fluffy, if it's, you know, let, let that stay, don't take that away. Some would say, hey, let's always have the snow days regardless of whether it's sleet or, you know, other types of freezing rain or whatever the reason for the delay or the time off. The, then some, you know, would like to have remote days and maybe a mixture. Some have indicated that they like, you know, they would suggest they'd like the two hour delay remote day possibility that we came up with this year. So there's some more conversations around that, but I know we've had some dialogue as a school board about going forward with snow days and certainly the newspapers have, you know, asked it like three or four times. So do you think this is the end of snow days? I personally do not believe it's the end of snow days. But I do think that there are some opportunities to maximize our instructional time better on days that perhaps would not be the environment outside would not be enjoyed as much by by students. I think that's about it that I wanted to share about the survey, just more a little bit of information to share, to be as transparent as possible, but also to let people know that there's still time to respond to those surveys. And then that there's a team of about 15 to 20 individuals and Nick has really been the one in charge of getting individuals together. Most have been on this committee before, but instead of having like, say, four administrators, we might have or five, and we might have two. Instead of having, you know, a larger number, like say, you know, three nurses, maybe we have one or we have two, I don't know, something like that. Just to kind of reduce the numbers a little bit. And that group will be meeting starting this Wednesday, I believe is the timeframe. And Nick, did you want to say anything about that specifically?
Sure. So yeah, we really tried to look at we, you know, we had a committee of 50 people last time around. Due to the timeframe that we have, trying to arrange the schedule 50 people with less than a week's notice and meeting for maybe one or two meetings within two weeks was kind of tough. So we thought of how could we categorize folks? So we broke everybody down into like their various roles, you know, again, like Ruben said, rather than having every single principal, it was okay, let's have a principal represent the elementary school. Let's have a principal represent the middle high school. Let's get, you know, a certain number of representatives from the JREA, the JRSSA, let's get a nurse. You know, folks like, and you know, we're going to be having this meeting on Wednesday to discuss kind of how things, you know, could or should move forward. We're also reaching out to other groups and parties, you know, the bus company, food service company, how do they kind of play into things? How do they feel about it? Do certain programs stay in place? So on, and then we will work on writing the plan, using our current plan as a base, you know, kind of saying these things work. They should still be in place or, you know, these things need to be scaled back or changed. And then we'll bring that to the school board for the 21st, with the understanding that throughout the summer, if things are to change, you know, based on current projections, we can always readdress things, whether it be better, worse and different. So you know, part of tonight's meeting was the public comment session, we have our surveys, we're really trying to hit all of the same things that we hit last time around over the summer, only trying to condense what we did in about a you know, a couple of months down into a couple of weeks, so.
Thank you. So that that's a good summary of that. And we've already summarized, you can see up there, the HVAC system work that we've been the, really the facilities committee, as well as our facilities manager in particular, has really worked hard and we keep on. We keep on going, so we're hopeful.
Are there any questions or comments for the superintendent?
I'd just like to say, I recognize the effort that they've gone through in the last three weeks. This has not been easy and the fortitude to stick with it shows a really good growth mindset. Nice job.
Great.
And just because we mentioned in public comments, I think that, you know, yeah, it's, let's say the obvious, it was, it's hot outside and that translates into stickier classrooms, really. I mean, John Leclerc and I went to almost every single classroom today checking temperatures and we know where things are in good order and where there are some, you know, more stickier or more kind of warmer situations. And we just, I just had him order 20 fans for, you know, box, big window box fans to make sure that we put some more inside some of those areas that didn't have as much airflow coming through, so that should be here tomorrow morning. You know, in looking at MUR and which types of schools are making some choices, they seem to be pocketed in a very specific portion of the state. Certainly one of those cities would, you know, tend to be about five degrees hotter and so forth anyway. And their facilities are very widespread, different than ours, because, you know, Manchester's a large place. We keep into in contact with all the superintendents in this area, asking them, I put a little question last night. Where, what are people thinking? What are, what's, what's the forecast that you see? I'm seeing this. And so we're keeping and trying to make the best decisions possible, certainly if parents choose to say, hey, this is just too hot to be in a school setting. You know, I've had a couple of phone calls, it's too hot to be inside with masks. I can definitely say that have gone around to every single school today, almost every classroom, there were a lot of mask breaks. So I think the most important thing to say is people need to stay hydrated. And so we have all these water bottle filling stations, bring, bring the cups, bring the mugs, bring the water bottles. And that's, that's important. So people who come into school hydrated, that's certainly the most important, and then keeping hydrated throughout the day. That's always important, but certainly more important now. And the feel of it, if you were to be in here is, yeah, it's, it's warm, but it's the humidity. Again, going back to the dehumidification importance of the systems.
I think getting that HVAC up and running is really critical. So I think, who knows, we're trying to keep that going. And this is the best week it could possibly be to push it through.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments for superintendent, let's move on to the consent agenda. So I need a motion.
Can we add?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas.
If we could add to the consent agenda first.
Okay.
Yep, that would be great, but I can't make the motion.
What is it we need to add?
We have some resignation.
There's a resignation of, it's a technically, it's retire, a retirement from the district by custodian Charles Deschaine. There is a nomination for a J, Jeffrey Grade School Special Ed Instructor, fourth, fifth grade case manager Alexis Compton. Did we have any others, Nick, that needed to be added? I think those were the two that I had, those one resignation and one. Oh.
That's the second resignation.
No, it's just a letter update.
I think there was just an update of a letter. Yeah. Sure.
It's.
And I haven't received.
Yeah, that's it.
The digital documentation on the other person that we thought we might be able to have.
Okay, so.
Those are the only two.
John, you want to try that again?
Okay, so then I'd like to amend the consent agenda to add the resignation of Charles. Then and accept the nomination, was it of?
You add, add the nomination Alexis Compton for JGS Special Educator.
As JGS Special Educator.
Effective date's resignation is effective June 30th, 2021 for Charles Deschaine. And the start date is August 25th for Alexis Compton.
Great, so we'll move to accept the consent agenda with the changes noted and.
Okay. And I need a second.
I'll second it.
Is that Christine?
Yes.
Okay, this is very hard to see, that's all. Now I know where you're sitting though, so good. All right, because I am remote, I need to do this as a roll call vote. So Charlie?
Hi.
Thank you. Patty?
Hi.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you, John?
Hi.
Thank you, Christine?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa?
Hi.
Thank you, and I say aye, so that passes 700. Thanks all. Okay. Um, we have a donation. Oh, that was part of the consent, sorry. Action items, guess that's where we're at next, sorry. My marker has bled through on my agenda. Okay, so the purchasing guidelines.
Yes, for purchasing guidelines, the Finance Committee reviewed purchasing guidelines at the last meeting. And we're suggesting that the board approve changes to the purchasing guidelines as was attached to the agenda to highlight the major changes. The first one was that obtaining quotes. Increased the amount of spending required to obtain three quotes from item for items written or verbal from three. From three thousand to fifteen thousand dollars. And we've. Excuse me. We've changed it from three thousand. Let me go back, okay, we've increased. We've increased the. The amount that you can complete and submit a purchase requisition for from one hundred to. To three thousand to one hundred to fifteen thousand, so everything under fifteen thousand can be done with a purchase order. Between fifteen thousand and seventy-five thousand requires three votes now, or three quotes. And then anything above seventy-five thousand now requires bids. So those are the changes we made, we made, we increased the bids from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. We've increased the three quotes from three thousand to fifteen thousand. And then allowed the. Purchase recs to. We changed from a three thousand to fifteen thousand.
For the people who are in the audience digitally, we'll actually hear two. That would be found on page eight, I believe, of the document, most of that in a matrix. Couple other spots too, but that's, that's the main thing. Yes, this is summary of it.
There, there were some adds to the exceptions. Purchases made through collaborative purchasing groups, acquisition of personal or professional services. Student tuition agreements and renewal of current vendor service contracts. Although I think. Let me check. Got to make sure that the last one, I'm working from a different copy.
While Charlie's looking for that, basically this allows for some more flexibility. It's, we have definitely found this year that we have had some constraints in getting things as fast as we possibly can. We do have a very nice team of individuals who have repeatedly shown to get the best bargain. And are quite good negotiators as well, so we're pleased with that. But also we have some other systems in place since the times these were originally. Put into order, basically, we wanted transparency. And we wanted to have the board be able to have their eyes on it. Well, we do now have a finance committee. That is going to at least once a month look on these things. We also have. A pretty well-oiled machine of the two board members coming in to approve the manifest and so forth. So we have several groups of individuals, almost at that point, almost the entire board. Has seen all the spending, and certainly we have a fairly. Detailed budget process. But the, the addition of the finance committee really puts things into a nice oversight.
So are there any questions about the purchasing guidelines?
Yes, it's my understanding that this also brings us more into. A similar type of approval with other similar sized districts in our area, is that, is that true?
Well, similar size and larger and, and some smaller as well. Yeah, John had called around to a variety of schools. And found out that we were probably the. Strictest. Amongst them. So where this comes into play, where this is the most beneficial is when it comes to facilities. So. Right.
So is that the only comment or question? Okay. So we need to approve these. So I would need a motion.
That we accept the purchasing guidelines as written.
All right, thank you, Patty.
I'll second.
And that was Alicia?
Alicia.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so roll call vote. Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Thank you, Christine.
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes.
Thank you, and I say yes as well, so that carries seven zero zero, thank you. Next up is the proposed reopening framework changes, we've already had some discussion, but.
This is regarding the current year.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll speak to the rationale. Things have changed, right? So and they're continuously changing and we, our nurses in particular have weekly meetings with the. Doctor Chan, the state epidemiologist, and they get information, suggestions about how to move forward, how best to move forward. Both of these come from either that direction or suggestion. Or perhaps Nurses Association suggestions as well. And the masking outdoors was commented on prior, you know, in this earlier today by some individuals from the community. They're recommend, they, they're recommending that. Schools and childcare settings remove masks during outdoor settings. Recession, non-contact sports, et cetera. You know, we. So that, having more clarity around that, I think is the key here. Then this is definitely something that is suggested by Dr. Chan from the state.
Ruben, would that also include instances of outdoor learning?
It would, yeah, anytime anyone's outdoors, yeah.
But we approve this tonight, won't it be effective?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I mean, Nick typically takes this and puts it into a little more condensed phrase, but yeah, that's the idea. That being said, you know, there's still recommendations from DPHS for distancing even outside.
Right.
The other language is perhaps more important to our nurses. They've done a fabulous job during this timeframe, this has not been an easy year. They've, I mean, we've changed. So much information has changed from the beginning of the year, the suggestions, you know, CDC, DPHS. Never in the beginning of the year that we think that they were going to be doing all the contact tracing, because of course the state said that they were going to do that, that did not, that lasted about two weeks. And then we've done everything in-house with the support of them, and so there's been quite a bit of work. They've, they follow policy to the T, they've done a great job that way. Giving them a little bit of leeway within policy would be helpful as they work with families and make some perhaps. Professional judgment. While the language we have in there does allow for some professional judgment, I think it would be a lot. Better if we had some language that gave them the leniency to have these discussions with families. For instance, parents, there's a variety of COVID tests out there right now, you have home tests that can be done. Do we make people go back to the doctors to get tested for that sort of stuff? Or do we take this test that was, that someone purchased and use that? So that type of conversation to just find out what that evidence is, does a parent know that the child has a significant allergy? You know. Reaction during certain seasons or whatever like that, that maybe we don't have documented, that needs to get documented. But those types of conversations right now, there's a little difficulty with that. So that's the, that's the rationale for that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed change to the reopening framework. For June seventh, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
That's Alicia.
That's me.
Alrighty, alright, so we have a first and a second, if there's no further discussion. Well.
I have a question for clarification, so for example. Next week at graduation, students might, might not be six feet apart. Or, I mean, all of the attendees outside might not be six feet apart, so will it be required for graduation? I'm not suggesting we don't accept the policy, I'm just stating that there might be some, some instances where there may be ambiguity based on the. Situation.
Well, this would say schools and childcare settings can remove masks in outdoor settings. Regardless of persons vaccinations that us, including at recess and during non-contact sports. So I think for the most part, it's the idea is for movement. And to allow people moving, especially as there is getting warmer and, you know, breathing and so forth. It certainly would open up, this language would open up the door for. Them to not have masks during graduation. I think that we'd still socially distance them. What this does not do is, it does not make any. It does not afford any leniency perhaps to any of the other policies for adults. Just so that you are aware of that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I just have a question on the second part. With, that the nurses can collaborate with parents to determine. My concern with it is that will that turn into a more of a battle? Between nurses and parents, if a nurse is saying. I think this is an onset and the parent's saying it absolutely is not an onset of COVID. Where does that end? How would that? Be, you know, right now, there's kind of a little bit more of a clear cut. If you have these symptoms, then this is our steps. I'm feeling that this is actually making it more vague and actually might put. More pressure on their nurses to, you know. And I'll prove something, I, I'm not sure, I feel like this is really vague and putting a lot more on nurses to fight with parents, basically.
Nick, you got this language from.
Yeah, yeah, so this. This exact sentence as it is here was the language given to me from the nurses. This wasn't something we created, this is something that they brought forward to us. So this is something that, you know, in theory has been vetted through the, the nurses and our staff, so. I can't necessarily speak to the question that you had about the kind of fine line or the kind of removing of that. In terms of more of a, I guess, kind of back and forth, but what I can say is that this was something that the nurses said specifically asked about. They recommended the specific paragraph.
All right, so who would win? You know, it's like, I'm just wondering who would win, so I, seriously, like. There's a symptom, they're talking with the parent, the nurse kind of feels like. Boy, this seems like it's, it's COVID, it's like symptoms, the parents are insisting it's not. Who would win? Like, was the nurse saying, no, you have to take the child anyway? Or with, or nope, the parent said it's not, so we're good, they're going to stay, I guess. I could see this getting very messy quickly.
I mean, again, this is based on the information that was, you know, provided to me, so I can't speak specifically for the nurses, because I'm, you know, not one of them. Kind of based on the conversation and at least my understanding of that was the concept behind it was based on. Some of the situations that were happening, they wanted more freedom to maybe say that, you know, like Ruben brought up the idea of an allergy situation. You know, a lot of allergy symptoms are COVID symptoms. So based on how the reopening framework is currently being interpreted, if you have an allergy symptom, you need that doctor's note. Signifying that you have an allergy, if you don't have proof of that, that becomes kind of that. Potential area where you might have to send somebody home in lieu of a doctor's note, where you might be able to have a little bit more negotiation. Should this language be approved?
Or the addition to other types of tests, quick tests.
Yeah.
We've been following pretty aggressive, aggressive is a bad word, pretty strict. Guidance of who's testing and so forth, so.
So. Just. This language seems okay to me, but I understand Lisa's concern, and I'm just wondering, would it be alleviated if we. Made some reference to the final determination. Being by the nurses. And what do you think about?
Yeah, and I would wonder if by the administration, actually.
Okay.
Well, so as it's currently written in the framework. When it comes to a student being sent down to the nurse. Or another similar situation, the nurse is the one that makes that determination currently. The, the point of this document and the reason why we moved to this compared to what we were previously doing. And we were striking and adding language to our entire framework was because we were running into situations where. We'd come to the board meeting and there'd be a lot of like additions and subtractions, and we were essentially trying to get to the bottom of what was the essence of the change. Anyway. So this is in, this is more of an addition to what's already in place, so if you look at. We have the flow charts, I believe they're. Half of the way through the document, maybe two thirds, and they actually, you know, for the student track, they, they lay out kind of. A step where the nurse, you know, makes a determination and things like that, so this is, this is just kind of helping.
Like, I don't have. The medical expertise, you know, or credentials to do anything, they make the determination. This is, you know, it says district nurses may collaborate, they just want flexibility. Depending on the situation take place, there might, there might be situations where they think. Yeah, this is probably, you know, not such and such, but here's the guidance that we have, here's the guidelines, I don't agree with it. You know, I, this, I, I don't know all the circumstances, they just wanted that flexibility. And you're right, flexibility comes with other unknown sometimes or. Consequences.
But because it's in addition to and not instead of. Stronger than it appears. Does that make sense, Lisa?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying, yeah.
Okay, so we're ready for roll call vote. Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Hi.
Thank you, Christine.
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes.
Thank you, and I say yes, that carries seven zero zero. And next up, we have the school board meeting calendar.
Yeah, I can talk to this one.
Yep.
Sorry for the small delays, it's just, I, I listened to this meeting through headphones. To make sure that the audio is working and it's really distracting when I'm hearing myself on a delay. So I'm here, Nicholas Handy, Communications Coordinator, School Board Secretary, for those who can't see me, I can real quickly, actually. All right, so. We typically carry forward a very similar or the same calendar, you know, year to year. You know, same non-public time, same public time, first and third Monday of the month. This is kind of my proposal at this point in time, we've been meeting in the music room pretty successfully throughout. The, you know, this year and through COVID. It's probably one of our best rooms, audio wise, and now that we have the increased audio equipment, it's, I've been hearing a lot of feedback about the audio quality. Being a lot more improved. So rather than doing our traditional back and forth of goat meeting and Conan meeting and RMS. I'd like to, at least for now, continue meeting in the music room, if that's okay with the board. My rationale behind that is that the meeting room that we would have at RMS.
My rationale behind that is that the meeting room that we would have at RMS is the cafeteria. The last time I was in there for one, a third, if not more of it was taken up by some storage due to, you know, the social distancing, having to move some stuff out of classrooms. So we're already losing some space. And then on top of that, there's so many noises and things in there that it's really hard to hear sometimes just in the room together. And then microphoning everybody, you're gonna get that increase of feedback. So I would like to, you know, hopefully over the summer, take some time to find a better meeting location in Ridge. So perhaps we could have that kind of back and forth of having the equality in the two towns again. So that's kind of the main thing that you see in that continuation of the music room being the same location for everywhere. We do traditionally flop deliberative session locations year to year. I did at least put RMS Gymnasium here. Just because again, like if we're meeting everywhere, you know, every meeting in Conan, at least having the equality of having the deliberative session range, again, completely up to board discussion. I guess the other thing of note is these, or I guess two things, one being if you look at the budget hearing dates, budget development dates, snow dates, deliberative session dates. All the meetings by law, I looked into the RSA to determine when those should be held. And I think that I have these dates correct. We usually do have a budget development calendar that comes, I believe, usually in like October, November. And then we'd have the finalization of those dates should they need to change at all. And then we do have again, a conflict with Independence Day with the first meeting of the year. We have the Labor Day. And then also the Martin Luther King Day, all being those Monday holidays, these movements being one late, one week later, one week earlier and moving to Tuesday is how we've carried them forward traditionally throughout the years. So that's kind of the formation of this calendar. I did see, and I don't know if you guys saw, but the New Hampshire School Board Association did send out a memo dealing with this idea of having primarily remote meetings. Technically, for a really long while, we've been conforming to a physical meeting space. So we're still in the traditional format per se, just adding in the streaming equipment. A lot of other places are meeting exclusively digitally right now. Should the state of emergency not be renewed at one point? That provision allowing for the exclusively digital meeting will go away. So while the, our traditional meetings like this will obviously be unaltered because it was in our plan to live stream meetings anyway. This could have an impact on our ability to hold some of those more emergency impromptu meetings where we're just kind of quickly convening via Zoom to approve a nomination or resignation or a budget transfer. I know that we're heading into that summer season where traditionally those things are more likely to happen. So we do have to be mindful of that. That should we should that state, state of emergency go away, we do have to go back to having the physical component as described in RSA.
Right. Can I just say something to that as well?
Of course.
I double checked this with our with the New Hampshire School Boards. I can't remember his name right now. I can't believe it. That's terrible.
Will Phillips?
Well, there we go. Will, thank you. That, that doesn't mean that, like, as long as we have a physical quorum, we're still able, like right now, I'm remote. But that's because we have a physical quorum that would still be allowed. So if we had to have an emergency meeting, if we can get the quorum there and others can then phone in or, you know, come in by Zoom, that's still allowed. So that's all.
Yeah, and that's the way it was before.
Right. But we never did it. So.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any feedback on this calendar. If we like how it is, if we want to make changes, any notes that you guys have, obviously I can, you can make a motion effective of those things. And then we can just switch it and I'll, you know, make it, I'll change it around tomorrow and post it. I think Charlie had his hand raised.
Yeah, I'm okay with the schedule right now, but I think it's important that we do look at how we can, how the board can have a presence in there. I think, I think the board should have presence at both towns. I think that's the reason why we went back and forth. I don't think that participation is increased by going one place to the other. So from my perspective, I think that it's worthwhile to look at where we can hold one in Ranger, what we need to do to dampen the sound in Ranger. So that we can have a school board presence there.
And that certain, certainly is the intention. It's just a question of me. So we did buy, I can put me back on screen. So in front of me, you see that there are the two boxes. While we only have one of these, which is the microphone box, which corresponds to the one microphone for the public. We also have a second wireless. This bottom box, we actually purchased two of them and that's the important part for streaming. That's where all the cameras run in, all the audio runs in. The goal is to house one of these boxes in Jaffrey and house another one in Ridge. Because the intention was to have, not have to, A, move a bunch of things around, B, be able to have some equality between the two towns. See if there are multiple events being held at the same time. You don't have to say, oh, we can't do something with one event because we already have one going on. We don't have the duplication in the microphones that we're using, the actual goose neck microphones that are at the tables. But obviously my office is here, so I could grab whatever equipment. We needed to be specific to that meeting, bring it to Ridge. We already have some existing equipment there. Each of these streaming boxes comes with one of each of those cameras and a tripod. There's a, that third camera that we're using for public comments. That's a swing camera that's not affiliated with either unit. It's just independent. So we, we definitely have the technology to do it. It's just a matter of me finding the time to actually go there, do some testing, figure out like, are we picking up certain sounds? That's certainly in the cards for the summer, provided nothing crazy or major happens. You know, there's a lot of like catch up in projects that I'm hoping to work on with having, you know, a little bit less on my plate for the summer. So should we get to a point where I find that ideal meeting location? Because also the other thing that we're gonna have to think about is when we do this new reopening framework for 2021, 22, when is the effective date? Because while we don't necessarily, well, we are actually gonna have some students in the building with summer programming, but also like meeting as boards. Part of the reason why we also have to be mindful of space is if you look at how everything's set up now, we're still as close to social distance as we can. You know, in some cases, we're not quite six, but you know, this setup only allows for, I think it was about 12 chairs for the public. If more people start coming in, we just have to be mindful of all those things. So if we get to a place where social distancing is less, that gives me more freedom and finding a location because I'm, you know, able to better fit people in a room. So all, all things to think about for the RMS location.
I'll just say, I totally get the equality point, but I like the consistent meeting location. It's far less confusing to remember where I'm going when. I do worry a little bit about the wear and tear also on transporting the equipment from one location to another and getting everything perfected. Just sound quality wise. So I like this calendar. And for the deliberative session, that feels fair to me, but I like the consistency.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yes, Nick, if you could take a look at January 18th. There's a date confusion. Where it says Tuesday since 1/20/20 is MLAK. I think you need to fix some dates there.
Yeah, it's, it's just that one day. I, I double triple checked the left column. I just missed that. So that's obviously last year's date.
Okay.
If consistency of location is less confusing, maybe. This is just a thought. We met all next year in this room, maybe the following year, we flip it completely and meet in Ridge.
That makes more sense.
Every single time. So.
And it's less moving and adjusting.
I agree that equality
Yep.
is important.
Yep.
And I'd like to point out, it's the people who have come in person have been from Ridge. So I'm grateful that they did feel comfortable to come. And that's great. And I think that that's as would Jaffrey folks.
So it's still, Nick has to have the time to figure it all out. And work it all out for over there. So maybe the goal would be that by the beginning of the school year.
I think what the board needs to decide on, because I heard two different ideas, one being having the every other meeting. You know, first meeting of the month being in one location, the second being in another. Or this idea of do we keep the same meeting location for a year? And then have the deliberative session be in the opposite location and then next year flip and have every meeting in Ridge and have the deliberative session and the Pratt. So I think, I think that's the kind of main decision that we should try to make. You know, maybe we don't have to make it tonight. We can think on it and decide later, but this idea of how do we want to achieve that equality?
Alright, so I was gonna say, if someone wants to make a motion and we can talk about the dates in the motion, and then we can have a further discussion as as Nick has opportunity to figure out the equipment and test it out in different places. Then go to, are we every other or are we a year here, a year there?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposed school board meeting calendar for 2021 slash 2022 school year. As is with the understanding that we'll take a look at options in the future.
Location options.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So I want a second.
I second that. It's Christine.
Christine, thank you. Okay. Charlie?
Hi.
Thank you. Patty?
Hi.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Hi.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. And I say yes. That passes seven zero zero. Thank you all. So we're up to the board committee updates. John, are you doing facilities?
Yes, so with facilities, we, our major item right now is waiting for some kind of a response or actually, as Ruben outlined in his superintendent's report, there's been a lot of work going on trying to get approval for the use of the SRT three funds. Maybe it's the SRT two and three funds for HVAC work. A lot of work is being done. EEI is working on providing detailed plans to the state for their approval. And we're hoping, John Leclerc told me that we're hoping to have something from EEI this week, towards the end of the week. And if so, the plan would be to hold another facilities committee meeting next Monday, the 14th. And other than that, the planning is continuing. We anticipate the paving and the grading of the two parking lots or the grading of the one parking lot at the Ridge Memorial School and the paving of both parking lots to be going forward.
Great. Okay. Any questions for John and facilities? Alright, great. Charlie, is there anything to add for finance?
Other than the fact that we just did the purchasing guidelines at the last meeting. I was just gonna ask if there's any other board members that would like to join the finance committee. We meet once a month, one o'clock on a Thursday, Thursday. And it's for all you people who don't understand numbers. That's a great opportunity to learn. So if you're interested, let me know.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Charlie. Alicia?
Yes. So policy met last week. Lisa joined our, our committee for our first meeting together. So really new committee. We will be sending one policy forward that discusses do enrollment. And then we started diving into our acceptable use policy, which had been rescinded at some point. Basically, we were, we're in the middle of working that out. We had to do quite a lot of digging and found a lot of rabbit trails and we're trying to piece it all together into something that makes sense for the district and really covers all of the different facets of acceptable use. So you can look forward to that at some point in future.
Alright. Thank you very much. Any questions for Alicia?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of quick points. So I, I think I promised a while ago that I'd send you guys an email with a bunch of information. I do have the information. I haven't sent the email. I do apologize. It's relative mostly to committees. I did recently have a conversation with Will Phillips, the New Hampshire School Board Attorney or Association Attorney. Just a reminder, I know that I was equally bad about it throughout this year about sometimes posting minutes and things that were sent my way. But just the conceptual idea of making sure that we are posting agendas, minutes, et cetera. So I'll pull that all together and send it out. Charlie?
Posting the meetings, not the agendas.
Yeah, so you don't need to post, you don't need to post the agenda. You need to post the meeting time, location and date. That's the important thing. And then the meeting minutes need to include relative discussions, any sort of decisions that were made and who was there. That's kind of the foundational you know, set of things based on law that we have to do. Obviously, we as a district have a practice of going a little bit above and beyond that. And I think that it would be helpful and nice, especially based on some of these conversations even specifically to policy to maybe make sure that we are holding ourselves to a certain level of standards. So I know that like as we're kind of going through the motions in that time period, it makes a lot, a lot of sense to everybody because we're talking about it. But if you're looking at a decision made in 2017, then you don't have any logic as to why it was made or how it was made or the, you know, corresponding moves that were supposed to be made because of that. We kind of run into a hole where we're kind of left looking for answers. So I think that's kind of an example where if we had a certain level above and maybe a little bit above and beyond, but not so much, you know, of the by law expectation, we'd be able to better guide future things based on some of the things that we've done in the past. I just, I just think it helps create more of a record for us to go off of instead of just kind of meeting the bare minimum and maybe not necessarily capturing the essence of what took place. So that's again, just my opinion. There are certain things I can send that are the by law expectations, but then just me as a as a person who's been going through conversations with some of these committees and trying to guide them according to the documents and records that we have.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're up to public comments, number two.
Alright, I am back. And let's pull up the windows. So again, same as normal. I'll pull the policy back up again, just so that everybody can make a note of that. We are now just down to a digital audience, so we'll take any related public, public comments. It looks like our policy doesn't quite want to come up. But I guess to summarize, please keep comments to agenda items. First name, last name, town of residence. Please be a resident of Jaffrey or Ridge. And did I pretty much cover everything?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, the raise hands.
Yeah, so just use the button. Yeah, so just, uh, use the button to raise your hand at the bottom of the screen and we can address you accordingly.
All right. Nick, you there?
Uh, yes, I was just giving people, um, some time to comment and um, we do have, sorry, feedback. Um, we do have one hand raised from Mark Haley.
Um, has Mark become a resident of Jaffrey or Ridge? Last I knew, he was in Keene.
I don't have any, um, indication one way or the other on that. He did, uh, put a comment in the, uh, chat section, which I'd be more than happy to send to the board.
Yeah, that's fine. All right.
All right, now that's the one I have.
Okay. All right, um, so we're then to board matters? No? Okay. Any other future items?
Since by the time we meet again, we'll have a whole new wonderful group of graduates. Um, and I want to congratulate them and their families and it'll be an absolute pleasure to join them in that celebration next Friday.
Great.
You're here.
All right. Well, then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
We'll re adjourn.
That was John. Thank you.
Yes.
And a second?
I'll second Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. And everyone in favor?
I agree.
All right, I, I, I.